That resulty or whatever.
I didn't see one change.
Oh, it didn't do anything.
Well, I don't know. Maybe it would have.
Could have.
How would you gauge it?
If it gets worse.
Oh, yeah, well, it didn't get worse.
Okay.
Evening.
If the Secretary please call roll.
Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Tim Boyd.
Here.
Bob Durshevitz.
Here.
Stuart Pop.
Here.
Dan Callahan.
Here.
Bill Ices.
Here.
Dave Latovic.
Here.
Full house.
Thank you. And the approval for this evening's agenda, there's one modification, and that is item number four, excuse me, the approval of the minutes of our study session. We were advised by the township clerk that those minutes will appear on the website, but there is no need for us to approve those because we never take any action at those meetings, so we won't be doing that tonight or in the future. So with that modification, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for August 20th as amended.
Okay.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pop and support by Commissioner Boyd to approve the amended agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting July 16th.
I'm, yep, I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 16th. Before a second, can I make one comment?
Sure.
On the minutes, right, on page two, where you had the comments from the public.
On July 16th?
Yeah, on July 16th, Dennis. Ken Phillips' specific concern was it took 3 minutes 52 seconds to make a left-hand turn onto Lily, and it was at 8:35 a.m., right? Which was a safety issue in his eyes. I just saw this as a higher than doing a traffic study, so at least wanted to capture his specific comment of 3 minutes 52 seconds to make a left-hand turn onto Lily because he was almost across the street, and it was at 8:35 a.m. in the morning.
Okay. All right.
Other than that, I'm in perfect agreement.
Okay, so is there, amend the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 16th as amended.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, move by Commissioner Pop and supported by Commissioner Latovic to approve the July 16th minutes as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Commissioner Sabolski, I had a comment on the Wednesday, August 6th meeting, if these are going to be posted on the website. On page, it's actually the page two, at the very top, the first sentence says, "Making it clear that ADUs are not currently permitted," period, and then it says, "C.O. observed." So I thought it's supposed to be Commissioner or something? Okay, on the draft minutes for August 6th, it would be the third page in from that, the very first sentence starts making it clear, okay. After the period, it just says, "C.O. observed that younger families, et cetera." So I don't know who that is that needs to be.
I'll look into my notes.
Okay, good, thank you.
And make appropriate changes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner, I have one other comma on the draft minutes, right? All four pages are.
Back on the sixth?
Yeah, back on the sixth. All four pages are listed as page two.
Right.
Hang on. That was it.
Anything else on minutes, either of the two minutes? Okay. Okay, and this is the time for public comment for any non-agenda items, so if anyone is here to speak on a non-agenda item, you'll have three minutes, and now's the time. Move on to public hearing, application 2565, the rezoning to agricultural for 51,000 North Territorial. And, the planner, please read the report.
Thank you, Chairman Sabolski. Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Hawke McKenna. The application before you for 51,000 North Territorial Road is a map amendment. It's a request to change the zoning district of the township zoning map. The property is currently zoned the R1E, one-family residential district, and the applicant is requesting a zoning change to the AG, the agricultural district. The subject site, as you can see on the first page of the report, consists of just one single parcel, almost 10 acres in size, which is on the north side of North Territorial Road, just east of Napier. So this is in the northwest corner of the township. The process for a rezoning request is that the planning commission hold a public hearing, which is set for tonight, and make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has the final approval in a rezoning, and they would review this at a future date. The ordinance provides for specific principles for evaluating a rezoning request. I'll go through those six briefly. The first is, will the proposed rezoning be in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the ordinance itself? And the ordinance's intent is to promote and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the township. Our findings are that the property already includes a single-unit dwelling, and that the owners wish to construct private stables on the property. In the agricultural district, private stables and other limited agricultural activities are permitted by right on properties with five acres or more. This parcel is almost twice the required size. A rezoning to the agricultural district will allow the property owner to conduct, you know, limited agricultural activities in the future. It's important to note that any rezoning that moves forward will still require the applicant to secure any permits from the building department for accessory buildings or fences, any, anything of that nature. As the single-family home will remain on the site, the residential nature of the use will largely remain the same. And, as we'll discuss later on in this report, the required dimensional standards of the agricultural district are met and exceeded for this parcel. So we find that the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance can be met with this rezoning request. The second criteria is, will the proposed map amendment rezoning further the goals and future land use map of the master plan? In review of the master plan, we note that there are no properties on the map that are designated as agricultural. However, there is a category for residential low-density, which is the lowest-density category that the future land use map prescribes, and the subject site falls within that land use category. On page three of our report, we detail the future land use designations for the surrounding sites, which also correspond with residential low-density or low-intermediate density. So while the future land use map does not have the specific agricultural district, we do find that the residential low-density on the property meets the intent of that designation. There's not an up-zoning of this property for a more intensive use. Criteria three is, will the map amendment correct an equitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than merely grant special privileges? We find that the proposed map amendment will not grant any special privileges. The applicant will still be required to submit any necessary permits and plans for any accessory structures or fences on the property, as would any other property owner. Criteria four, will the map amendment result in any lawful, unlawful exclusionary zoning? No. Criteria five is the proposed zoning consistent with the zoning classifications of the surrounding land? So again, you can look back to that table at the start of page three, which shows that the proposed zoning district agricultural is consistent with the surrounding properties. Directly east of the subject site is another property that is zoned agricultural. There are also two properties that are zoned agricultural to the north, separated by one parcel. And moving more northwest and even outside the township, there are more agricultural uses. So we find that that is fitting. Criteria six, could all the requirements of the proposed agricultural district be complied with on the subject site? And we've highlighted that in the dimensional chart there on page four, the scheduled regulations. Blue indicates the requirements for the agricultural district. The yellow indicates the R1E, which is the current zoning of the property. And the, as I stated earlier, the property complies with these dimensional standards and exceeds them in some cases, so no variance is necessary by the applicant for this rezoning. On page five is our recommendation. Again, this is a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for their final approval or denial, but it is our recommendation that the proposed rezoning to the agricultural district is recommended to the Board of Trustees, and we've listed three findings of fact. The first is that the property has characteristics which are consistent with nearby properties in the agricultural zoning district, and still promotes the continuation of low-density character in this area. The second is that the proposed agricultural uses would not alter the character of this area of the township in a way that is compatible with the goals of the master plan or the designation of the low-density for this area. And third, the site and the construction of any new accessory structures can comply with the dimensional requirements of the district and would still require building permit and building department review. The applicant is here this evening, and if you have any questions on this, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any applicant is here? Do you want to step up? Did you have anything to add to the planner's report? Is your mic on?
Sorry.
Uh, no.
Oh, now it is.
Oh, now it's, great.
Sorry, we'd both like to thank Laura and Liz for all their help through this application. Thank you so much. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. I don't know if there's anything specific, or if you just want more information about plans.
Are you planning on, I'm not sure, Laura, I guess it's for both, are you planning on having our riding stable have, you know, training or any of that, or is this is for your own private use?
Private use, so we'd like to have a barn built so that we can have a couple of pasture pets. I'm a board-certified veterinary surgeon and a USDA-accredited veterinarian, so any animals we have on our property are purely to be pets. We don't intend to have a commercial farm. We don't intend and would not be distributing any animal products or food products to the community. We just adore our property. We love all the wildlife that it brings, so we'd love to continue being good stewards to our environment and taking care of the animals that share the space with us.
Questions from Commissioners?
Yeah, I had one question. Would, would you ever want to grow anything on the 10 acres since you have plenty of land?
We just have like a small garden for our personal use at home.
All right.
No quarter.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, Laura, did we say this would be the only ag zoning in the township? Is that accurate?
There are other properties that are zoned agricultural today.
Great, all right. Nobody questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Not for me, but how about the rest of these guys?
All right. Anyone else?
I had one. We received a letter from Eileen Pawalek in support of your proposal. Is she the neighbor to, next to your left?
She's across the street to the southeast of us. Yeah.
Did you discuss this with your neighbor to the west at all?
Yes, so our neighbors to the west, Georgia and Silvio Scapatici, and their niece Lori Scapatici, to the northwest of us, are both very excited about this process. They're all big animal lovers, and we know there are restrictions for the township in terms of quantity and types of animals you have. We're not looking to be a nuisance, and we would absolutely follow those guidelines, but they've all been very supportive.
Great, good, thank you.
Are you going to have chickens?
I'm not sure. Not, not at this time. We're not looking to do that.
So do you already own these horses, or you're bringing it?
We don't, yeah, we don't currently have any large animals, obviously, but.
Other questions from this side? Nothing? Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing at 6:44?
Mr. Chair, I move we open the public hearing at 6:44 p.m.
Thank you.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and support by Commissioner Pop to open the public hearing at 6:44. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing at 6:45?
Mr. Chair, I propose we close the public hearing at 6:45.
And you have, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And you did have the, you referenced the one letter that we received, so I don't think you need to do that since you referenced it.
Yeah, there's a letter from, from Eileen.
All right. All right, are we ready for a motion, or are there any other questions? All right, are we ready for a motion?
I had one, one thought, right? It's clear veterinarian what they want to do, but I always tend to think if they sell 10, 20, 30 years down the road, right, are there any additional things on ag that they use, the 10 acres for half, 51% of ag? Is there anything, or is just ag generically written? This is more of a question to the planners here that allows a barn and riding, planting a garden, what else could be done on the property the way our zoning ordinance rests or sits today for ag use?
Pretty, it's pretty much limited to those uses.
All right.
It could be a full-blown farm, right? In theory.
10 acres.
Yes, yes, you could, you could grow products for sale in any agricultural property.
I mean, just fine, I'm just saying, yeah. And I love farmers, so I wouldn't be offended by that if that's what were to happen, but it's very clear the use. That table they had, I think it was on page five, right? All I want to point out is, when you look at, there's 13 vertical attributes there. 10 of the 13 are identical to our one E for what ag does, so this, to me, looks rock solid.
So is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, referencing the application for 5100 North Territorial, B.C. number 2565, I recommend that we recommend to the Board of Trustees for approval, citing the findings of fact included in the planner's report.
I'll second it.
Okay, move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Ices. Recommend approval of application 2565 to the Board of Trustees. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck to you, and wish you the best. Next is application 2566 on Hagerty Camp Mirage special land use. And planner, do your report.
Thank you, Chair Sabolski. Good evening, Commissioners. Liz Hart with McKenna. I'll be presenting a request for a special land use for a childcare center at 14501 North Hagerty Road. The applicant, Cara Trose, proposes to operate Camp Mirage, a longstanding local summer program for children in the community that will occupy an existing 17,000-square-foot institutional building on a 2.77-acre site. This site is the former home of the New Morning School, which is currently vacant. And the property is zoned R1, one-family residential, where childcare centers are permitted by a special land use approval. Some background on Camp Mirage, Camp Mirage will primarily function as a summer day camp, serving children ages four to 14. They have approximately 200 children attend their programs during the summer, and operates from mid-June through late-August, typically from 9:00 a.m. to noon, with extended care available from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Attendance is staggered, so arrival and departure times are spread out. And during the school year, Camp Mirage also offers childcare on select days when local schools are closed, such as mid-winter breaks and professional development days. So staff conducted their review based on the six standards set in section 2.7 for the planning commission to consider in evaluating a special land use. And I'll go over these with you. Criteria one focuses on compatibility with surrounding development. So again, the existing building was previously occupied by New Morning School, which also operated under a special land use approval, which was granted in 2002. And now the applicant seeks to repurpose the building as a childcare center. So the, we, staff did find that the proposed use is similar in character, scale, and intensity to the previous educational use, and will remain compatible with surrounding land uses. So again, the site's zoned R1, one-family residential, which is also to the west and north of the property, and south of the property, the land is zoned public land, which is also the Lake Point Soccer Park. And then across the street on Hagerty, off of Hagerty, is Office Service with the PUD. So our finding is that, given the site's prior use, the limited hours of operation, and moderate season intensity of the proposed program, the childcare center is appropriate for this location and will not negatively impact the orderly development of adjacent properties. Consideration one B, consistency of the use with the master plan. The master plan identifies this site as residential medium-density, and the master plan encourages land uses that support families and provide services that benefit the community. The childcare center and summer day camp are both family-focused services that help meet the needs of the residents in the community, and staff finds that the proposed childcare supports the master plan goals by providing a valuable service to families, making use of an existing building, and fits into the surrounding area in a way that supports a strong, family-friendly community. Consideration one C, the impact of the use on natural features of the site and surrounding area. The applicant does not plan to make any changes to the existing building or site's exterior layout. The property already includes mature landscaping, which the applicant plans to maintain and preserve. As a result, the building footprint, open space, and natural character of the site will remain unchanged, ensuring compatibility with the surrounding residential and public land uses. The finding staff found is the proposed use will have no impact on the natural features of the site. Consideration one D, the intent of the zoning district in which the use is proposed to be located is kept. Again, the property is located in the R1, one-family residential district, which is primarily intended for low-density, single-unit homes. However, the zoning ordinance does allow community-serving uses, such as schools and childcare facilities, through the special land use process. Staff found that as the building and overall site layout will remain unchanged, and as the use aligns with the community needs, the proposed facility, the proposed use is consistent with the intent of the district. Criteria two relates to the uses, criteria two is the use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. As the previous use of the property was a school, we find that it is still well-suited to safely accommodate children, both indoors and outdoors, because the applicant's not planning to modify anything on-site. So the finding is, by continuing a similar use in a space designed for children, the proposed childcare will protect the public health, safety, and welfare of both participants and the surrounding community. Criteria three, the use will, the use will be adequately served by public services and facilities. Since the site is already existing and is served by existing utilities, we do not expect the use to place additional demands on public services, and we find this to be met. Criteria four, the vehicular circulation of the proposed use will be in the best interest of the public. Again, the applicant's not making any changes to the use, so the egress and ingress into the site remains unchanged. And the finding from staff is, as the proposed use maintains the existing access points, operates with staggered schedules, and occurs during a time when nearby school traffic is reduced, minimal impact on local traffic circulation is expected. Criteria five, the location, use, and assembly of persons in connection with the proposed use will not be hazardous. Staff found that as the proposed use is seasonal, operates on a staggered schedule, and is located in an area already accustomed to similar traffic and activity levels, is not expected to conflict with the normal traffic flow or present a hazard to life, property, or the area. Criteria six requires the site layout to be in compliance with the general site development standards of Article 29, Site Plan and Development Approval. Child daycare centers, childcare centers do have specific requirements found in section 28.4. The first use standard is that a fenced outdoor play area shall be provided and maintained with a total area equal to minimum of 500 square feet per child. So the site, right now, is approximately 2.77 acres, that's about 55, or, and there's approximately 55,500 square feet on the site specifically for outdoor play and activity. Now, the applicant, New Morning School, had a shared-use agreement with the township to use the Lake Point Soccer Park, and the applicant is going to continue that shared-use agreement, so that adds 11.7 acres to the use to be available for outdoor space, so staff does find that this requirement is met with that. Use standard two is all care facilities shall be registered with, or licensed with the state. The applicant has stated that they are registered with the state of Michigan through the LARA Use standard number three, childcare centers located in a residential district shall be located on the exterior of the district and shall not, but not, and shall but a non-residential zoning on at least one side of the lot. The site is within a residential district, but is on the edge of it, and to the south again is the public land zoning for the lake soccer, the Lake Point Soccer Park. So it does meet this requirement. And use standard number four, adequate ingress, egress, and circulation shall be provided. Again, the existing infrastructure on the site is not proposed to be changed, and staff finds this to be in compliance with this standard. And use standard number five requires group daycare homes shall not exceed 16 hours of operation during 24-hour period, and shall not operate during hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. The proposed childcare center will, is not proposed to exceed 16 hours of operation, and the core programming hours from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and the extended care from 7:30 to 5:30. This all shows that this requirement is compliant. And use standard number six, such facilities shall be located at least 1,500 feet from other state-licensed residential facilities. We find that this is, this use is, complies, the existing facility is located approximately 2,500 feet south of the Early Childhood University, located, I believe, southwest of the corner of Hagerty and Five Mile Road. So based on these findings, staff is recommending the planning commission grant special land use approval for the childcare facility, based on the nine facts of finding that I just went through with you. I'm happy to list them all out again for you if you would like. I'm happy to list them all out again for you if you would like. But that is my presentation for you. The applicant is here to take questions, and I'm happy to take any as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the applicant is here? Oh, do you want to step forward and?
Hi there. My name's Kara Trost, and my husband, Jason Trost. And we'd like to thank, of course, Liz and Laura for helping us. All this whole experience working with the township has been very pleasant, very great experience.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add to what has been said, or?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. Before we open the public hearing, does the commission have any questions at this point? No?
So, I just have a question. So there's the camp in the summer, then it's regular daycare all the other times, right?
So we only operate a summer camp, and then we are open for the days that Plymouth Canton Schools are closed. So we're talking about like spring break, midwinter break, any professional development dates that the teachers have. We open for childcare for those parents, so the kids aren't home alone. So we would be open on those days. There's a handful of them, maybe a few each month.
Oh, and the rest, you're just, no one's at the, it's just closed?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We'll use it as office space.
Yeah, right, right. You're good. Right.
Anyone else down here?
Can't think of a better use for it.
Right.
No, unless another school, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll open, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I noticed that page three of the second packet, that was much thicker, which included the purchase agreement, it said it was subject to inspection, did the inspection get completed?
I believe so. Is that correct, Terry? Yes, yes.
And everything is to code and, okay. And the second question is, I bought sold enough real estate properties to know there's ten percent owners that will take care and fix everything, and make sale go like this, and there's the ninety percent that are, for whatever reason, not is accountable or responsible. Was there anything else, right, that the previous owner said they'd like to do or they'd recommend? Because when I read criteria two, it says, hey, the existing was a previous school, and it's well-suited safety. I agree with a hundred percent about what's written, but I always like to verify in order to trust. Is there anything that the previous owner said they'd do differently or change to make it safer?
No, they have not.
Okay, all right.
And the principal is here as well, today. Principal of New Morning School.
Good, great. And the comments are overwhelming in support, and I agree with Trustee Dorchevitz's comment, right? So that was, I have no further questions, but I want to make sure the rest of the committee has a chance to ask if anything surfaced.
No? All right, well, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
And we, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing at seven oh one.
Mr. Chair, I move we open the public hearing at seven oh one PM.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to open the public meeting at seven oh one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue? Okay, state your name and sign in.
Sure. My name's Jim Moranl. I'm the president of the Breckenridge Homeowners Association, which is adjacent to Camp Mirage site. First of all, we, as a community, we would welcome them. We welcome Morning School. They were great neighbors, and hopefully Camp Mirage will be great neighbors as well. Just wanted to say we have, have our fence, which is between us. We have worked with the school previous, where there were some problems with the fence. They were repaired, fixed. They maintained the property nicely, and I just want to say, as a community, we're well in support of Camp Mirage. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming in. Is there anyone else who can just step up? Okay. All right. See no one else, so is there a motion to close the public hearing at seven oh two?
Mr. Chair, I move we close the public hearing at seven oh two PM.
Support?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to close the public hearing at seven oh two. Any other concerns that the commission wishes to have addressed? If not, are we ready for a motion?
Yep.
Okay. You want to make that motion? Oh, wait. Do you, did we receive one letter?
Yes, I did. We did receive one letter from Jennifer Miller, and very, very positive there as, as well.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
No, I think Stuart was going to make.
Or did you have a question?
No, no.
All right, I would like to make a motion to, what, vote on, or?
No, we, we approve this. Special land uses are with us.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the special land use for Camp Mirage Child Care Center, number two five six six.
Supported by the planners' report.
And supported by the planners' report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pop and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve application twenty-five sixty-six in accordance with the planners' report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, congratulations.
Thank you all for attending. Yours were really awesome, weren't they? So, so good. Something goes right, you know, you know what I mean?
You had a lot of support.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we move on to.
That cleared the audience out.
Yes.
Did you say something?
That cleared the audience out. A lot of people supported him, which is great.
Application twenty-five fifty-eight, the thirteen one oh one Hagerty Road conditional Do you have your report or your updates?
Can you hear me okay, or do you want me to go shut that door? No problem. Okay. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
The sound projects.
Yeah.
You know, I hope she'll be able to hear me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura. All right, so this application is one that the commission has considered before back at the June meeting. This application is a conditional rezoning for the property at thirteen one oh one Hagerty Road. This is the northwest corner of Plymouth Road and Hagerty Road. It is fifteen acres that is currently vacant. And the applicant proposes to conditionally rezone the site from the current zoning, which is C two, the general commercial district, to the industrial IND district. The applicant has requested that this item be tabled for up to six months. They would like to submit a revised application. They are not here this evening in attendance. Since the public hearing was noticed, and the, the sign on the property stated tonight's meeting, we still must open and close the public hearing, just like we did at the June meeting. I would recommend that we do that, and then that there be a motion to table this application for up to six months, and allow the applicant the opportunity to, to resubmit. We notified the adjacent homeowners with any contact information that we had from them, and anyone who submitted public comment before. So they are aware that this application is not, no affirmative or denial action will be taken tonight. That is just a recommendation to table. And when we, if we receive, if the township receives an updated application, we will do another public hearing, and it will be re-noticed. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know our report was included in the packet, which recommended denial at this time. If there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. If there's questions for the applicant, I'm also happy to take those this evening and provide them in writing to the applicant, should they wish to resubmit.
Okay, well, appreciate you letting the public know about it, so they're not wasting their time coming for kind of a nothing approval or denial. Any questions on behalf of the commission at this point for Laura?
Just one. A number of the residents that came from ravines, when this was previously on the agenda, had expressed concern over heritage trees that were on the dividing line between the property, right? And, you know, the five things that got flagged, I'm glad to see they're flagged, and the deferral makes sense. What I didn't see in there was any effort made to identify and try to protect, and I don't know if they were within the existing twenty-five feet or the now seventy-five-foot buffer. I have no idea. But that would be really good, since several residents spoke out in concern on that point, right? I'd like to see the applicant take the time, make the effort, since they got to do some cleanup on five other things, to, to try to address that concern with, whether it's a picture, a sketch, it doesn't need to be a thousand fifteen-hundred-dollar architectural thing, but just making the effort to know what's in there where. So the plan that's submitted takes their concerns into account.
But there would be a tree survey, wouldn't there?
Correct, yes. If this site, since this is a rezoning, there is no plan that's cemented for this site, so when they would have the actual site plan or special land use, they would need to provide that at that time. What they have shown on their conceptual drawing that's included in their packet at the last pull-out page, they have noted their property line, which is shown in orange on the, the western boundary. And then, to the west of that, they show on the ravines property, that's where the dense woodlands are located. So they're, at this point, the information that we have is that those denser woodlands are not located within their property. But a full tree survey would be required.
Yeah, Bill, so what we do is, you know, we're concentrating more on the use of this property when they're coming up here before us again. That's a site plan consideration. Now, it's hard to not have that kind of discussion, particularly with the public, because they like to know what's gonna, what's gonna be there, how's it gonna look, kind of. They haven't, probably have not invested a whole lot of time or effort into it. But again, let's say it were rezoned to what they requested, they could turn around and sell that property, and what we were told may never be, see the light of day. Some, the new owner might have some completely different idea, as long as it meets the rezoning, whatever it is that it's placed on. So we have to concentrate more on the, the use. But site plan is an important consideration. Sort of hard to separate the two, but you just have to put it in the back of your mind. It could not, it might not be what you think it is.
Thanks for that clarification, Chair, Commissioner. The, the fact they started with the landscape buffer and the berm tells me they're trying to make a good faith effort. I'm just trying to make sure they, they get past their base and slide safely into home, right? You know, because this, this proposal is better. And I, and I read this, right, and it looked like they were potentially looking at changing the location of the docks, so you wouldn't hear trucks back. Is that accurate? I just didn't see anything on what was submitted as showing a new location for it. And maybe I'm mistaken with that, but I just wanted to get clarification.
You are correct, Commissioner. They did not identify any location for docks with this recent submittal.
And I'm wondering, is that something we can ask, would they, you know, or is it just too early in the process?
I think it's a little early in the process to get into that level of detail, but it certainly is something that should be brought up. Again, it's a site plan issue.
Yeah.
But it could have a negative impact, depending on the location of those docks.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you bring that up, because, you know, the previous proposal they had, when we looked at this three months ago, it actually showed it on that backside, which is why I think the residents had voiced that concern, so.
I, I think from my perspective, this is really a rezoning request at this point. And I think what we really need to focus on is, is it appropriate to change the zoning from commercial to industrial? And that, to me, that's the overriding concern at this point. Site plan issues would follow if we agree it should be rezoned, but I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that it's the rezoning. It's the key issue we have to think through, is do we really want to change this zoning? And if we do, do we want to change it to industrial?
And to that point, Commissioner Boyd, thanks for bringing that up. Their previous package, which probably had to be ninety pages long, went through the history where it was zoned as industrial, from the beginning of time on probably the first master plan, all the way up to two thousand and four, which is why they spent a lot of time in here clarifying how, what it was changed to had no merits. They've tried, and, but, but to your point, right, I just want to make sure that, you know, it was industrial. And, and, and thanks for bringing that up. The other thing I want to share is, I actually went and did a, a walk-through on the property again, and that, that squatting tent is there, still on the property. It's been flattened, and there's a whole bunch of natty light cans on the property, so somebody's still squatting on this property in the trees, unfortunately, which.
Well, maybe you should let the police department know about that.
It's already been reported, right? It has been re-reported, so these residents were so concerned with safety that this will prevent that, it'll solve that problem.
Yeah, I, I would have to agree with Commissioner Boyd. I, I think this is more of a rezoning question. It's like, do you want to, you know, have it an industrial zoning where, I guess, it's just a generic two-story building, right? Which mean not everything will be rented out, it's, they just build it, and then it's open for rent, or what? Did he say what they wanted to do?
A, as we understand, it's a speculative build.
Yeah, that's what I.
So it could be, it could be a combination of things. It could be manufacturing, it could be warehousing, it could be storage, it could be office. There's just no guarantee at this point of what that use would be.
Right. So going back to what you, you know, there is a lot of residential now coming in there, like you were saying. So do you want to take a piece of property that is kind of key there, you know, it's on a corner, and have it more retail-ish, you know, commercial? So some places where people can go to for things? Or you just want another generic building? I mean, and there are a, a lot of industrial around there. So I, I see what they're saying, how it's mostly industrial, but, you know, I could see where commercial would be more desirable, I, I suppose.
I, I do want to caution, I read the applicant's text in quite a bit of detail, and there are some statements in there regarding the future land use in the, that don't correlate to the actual situation. And so, just so you know, the future land use map on this has been commercial for quite some time now. It was not proposed to change to industrial in either the two thousand and fifteen master plan update, or the two thousand and twenty-one master plan draft that was never approved. So when you read it, just remember that the facts of the matter are, the future land use is the gold standard, and that map clearly calls us out as commercial, not industrial.
Yeah, I did ask Laura to give us a presentation at the last study session about future length, the maps and all of that, but two commissioners were gone. So I'm going to ask Laura that perhaps at the next study session, it was a five-minute or ten-minute conversation that I think would be good for the newer commissioners to understand, make sure that, and that we all understand the differences between the different maps and the master plan. Because we're, we're going to undertake it, we already started a discussion of that, so everybody needs to have a clear understanding what these items are.
So is commercial generally retail? Does commercial mean a strip mall, or?
It's in the zoning.
Yes, a, a commercial could include a strip mall, it could include a, a cafe, it could include, the C two would allow for an office use there, it would allow for a, a veterinarian's office.
Like restaurant, yeah, any of those things, yeah. So more, more consumer-based instead of an industrial, yeah?
Yes.
But you, actually, on page four and five of the planners' report, she does get into some of the differences between commercial and industrial.
Yeah.
Just helpful.
Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion?
Well, we have to open the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, correct, sorry.
So.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open the public hearing at seven eighteen PM.
Seven eighteen. Okay, and who supports?
House support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Latarak to open the public hearing at seven eighteen. All in. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anyone here wishes to speak?
That would be...
All ayes.
Nothing to say? Nothing to say?
All myself.
Well, I thought maybe you fell asleep?
No, no.
Okay, all right.
Did, I have one question.
Sure.
Did the public know this was gonna be tabled?
She just said that, uh, she notified the people.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I would expect the ruleful, but yes, okay.
Yes, the HOA board and any other individuals that we had emails or contact information for were called or sent an email.
Okay.
Really appreciate that, Laura, thank you very much.
First.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move we close the public hearing at 7:21 PM.
Okay. Who, who's supported? Okay, okay, moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Lattarack to close the public hearing at 7:21. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, so, moving, uh, oh, we have to make a motion to, to, uh, to postpone, uh, for six months, which would be, um, see, this is August, September, October, November, December, January, February, up to February.
By the February Planning Commission meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there...
Mr. Chair, I move we postpone the application for up to six months, which would be to the February 2026 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to postpone, excuse me, application 2558 for up to six months, which would be the February 2026, um, Commission meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and we have the planner's report.
Yes, actually, this was not included in the packet, this is an error. Since we have the meeting next week, it will be on that one instead. But if there's any questions about current projects, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay.
I think there was a question at the last meeting, perhaps, about the residential structures of the St. John's Resort Facility, and those are fully constructed and occupied.
Okay.
Um, I had an ongoing question about the, uh, Seraphon site. Um, per Dave's comment, uh, is, has a big sign, two big signs that say open for business, and, um, the facility is in a, quite a state of disarray. Um, has there been any update, um, from last time?
The group home? No, Seraphon, the auto place on Northville Road.
From Independence Village.
Just south of M14.
Yeah.
East side.
Um, we've, we've shared some, um, complaints to code enforcement just last week, um, so I, I believe they're on it. Um, the applicant does have until later in September to resubmit, that, that's the end of their, um, site plan window.
What was the date again?
I, I believe it's September 20th.
September 20th, okay.
Yeah.
Before we get into Commissioner comments, um, Laura, did you have anything to say about the master plan discussion?
Well, I know we've been talking a lot about the future land use map, and for the next meeting, I will run through that presentation quickly, um, to distinguish between the existing land use, the zoning, and the future land use map. We do have a internal working list of properties that, um, we really need to closely take a look at, as far as what their future land use is gonna be in this update. And I'm hoping that we can share that, uh, list. It's 20-some properties, um, by the end of this week, and that would give the commissioners an opportunity to maybe this weekend or early next week, drive by some of the sites, get a feel, start thinking about what might be the best fit there. I do think at the meeting next week, um, Chevy, this morning, requested that they be postponed until October. They have some additional, uh, revisions that they need to make. So, that is off the agenda. So we'll have a little bit of a smaller agenda now, so I think we can realistically, um, discuss some of those future land use, uh, properties.
And we're still scheduled for our, our study session, it would be the 3rd of September, I believe.
That one is not on the calendar yet.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, if the commission would like to schedule that, or look at another date in September, that is an option. We can also think about that and make a determination next week. Will everyone be at the meeting next week?
What, uh, what do we have on, uh, study sessions?
Uh, next Wednesday, the 27th, is a regular meeting, an additional reg, special regular meeting. With applicant business.
Oh.
We split it up, 'cause we thought it'd be...
I remember.
Yeah. But it turns out there's not gonna be much next week either, or what?
There will still be a couple of applications, um, similar to tonight. We tried to equally divide tonight and next week. Um, so with Chevy coming off, it's one less for us to discuss, so I think we'll have some extra time.
Like today, you know, the applicant requested the, the table, and so we ended up with more time than what we had planned for.
Yeah.
Go on.
Just to add to Laura's comments, um, at our last, uh, meeting of the three, three of us, Dave, um, Dennis, myself, and Laura, we went through the 20-some sites, and we think there's about 16 of those that, um, are pretty obvious what the right answer is. Um, there are 11 of those that, um, where the answer's not obvious, and we're going to need to discuss those in detail as the Planning Commission and come up with a consensus recommendation. So I would anticipate that the majority of our discussion will be on those, uh, open ones, um, which, again, are about 11 sites. The others, obviously, once you look at it, um, if you agree, fine, if you don't agree, that's fine too, but we think those are a little bit more obvious, and we need to really focus our time on the open issues that, um, you know, really, we need to have a big impact on the township going forward.
But is there a list of those?
Yeah, that's what she's gonna distribute.
Yeah, I should probably drive by them all and just look at them.
Yeah.
When was that list sent out?
No, it's going to be sent out.
Oh, okay.
She, she's gathering the notes when we met last week.
Okay.
You know, processing it, and then she'll send those out so that everyone will have an opportunity to drive by, look at it, and then meet as a group to, you know, you know, chew it up and see what you think.
Okay.
If, if Kendra were still here, she would emphasize that the future land use map and the, um, decisions that are made on that is the, the key action item that comes out of the entire master plan. And so, if she were here, she would say we really need to put a lot of focus on this.
Yeah, there's not much land left, so we have to make the right decisions, uh, and our recommendation to the, to the board.
Um, I have a question too. There's a church right down the street from me, Praise Baptist Church, and they're letting, I mean, I think they own a house there, and they're letting all the vines grow and everything. I don't know if, I mean, I'm not one to throw stones, but, um, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that should be allowed, or anything.
You mean, you think the use is wrong, or are you concerned about the condition?
Yeah, just, they're just letting all the vines grow all over the house.
That's not a use.
You know the house, right?
Oh, I know, well, I walked by it.
I, I mean, I mean, it's not horrendous, but I, I don't know if that should be cleaned up. I don't know if we have a, you know, an enforcement...
There is an ordinance to...
Dan Atkins will know, he's our enforcement guy, he's part-time, he's very thorough.
I mean, it's just, it, it would take them an hour to just make it look a little better, that's all. You just gotta pull the vines down. But I don't know what they're gonna do. I mean, may, maybe they're just gonna sell that whole thing.
Are they, I, do they have services there?
Uh... No.
No.
It was a residential, and it was staked, so someone went and had it surveyed recently.
It's staked, no, no, no. The, the church, I thought, has one service a week, 10:30, I think.
Yeah, it's a church.
It's called Praise.
It's on the north side of...
Yeah, Praise Baptist.
Right next to, uh, the Plymouth Subs. Yeah, 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 yeah. So, they own, I think they own both homes, plus the church.
I think the former pastor was our state rapper.
Yeah, Jeff Noble.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I don't know. I think that whole piece of land is worth...
Is the church closed now?
No, it's still there. I, I, I just don't think it's, I don't think there's many parishioners, you know?
Yeah.
Well, there is a, a yard maintenance ordinance in the township, so maybe you should just, um, ask the building department to take a look at it.
I can, I can. I was just curious if anyone's heard anything, or, but no, okay.
Okay, anything else, Laura, on the master plan?
Oh.
No, no, thank you.
All right. Yes?
I have one suggestion. I like the fact we're gonna share it, great, thank you. All right, when it gets sent out, can we designate the 11 non-obvious ones, right? Because I'll go with all 26 or 27, whatever the number is, right?
Yes.
Spend time, and maybe I'll spend additional time with those 11, since there's a hung jury, right? And, uh, for the three guys that volunteer their time, there's a lot of time that went in it, so thank you for doing it, all right, you saved.
Laura will...
Others, and, and the, the planning department as well, right? Because it's just, you guys put a lot of time into it, and if you're 16, 27ths, or whatever the number is, you know, Meatloaf said two out of three ain't bad, and you're just about there, so that's really good.
So, once again, the assignment is to, uh, review the 27 sites and form an opinion as to what should be, uh, the future land use for those sites?
I think, really, on the, the ones that are open, I think it's just, it's a discussion that we need to have, you know, and get everybody's point of view. I mean, Laura will highlight what the issues are, or what the, you know, what, what we need to consider, but on, on those, the, the, the open ones, it's really important that we get everybody to weigh in with their perspective.
Okay.
Yeah, just, particularly the, the 11, that is sort of a big question, most, you know, and then some justification, why it should remain the way it is, or why should it be changed to something else?
Okay.
So, so to be specific, wanna get it sent out, whether you shade it yellow, or, or flag it with an asterisk on those 11 sites, just please make it obvious to us looking at, so we can view it from all angles.
I'm sure she will, yeah.
That's all.
So are we gonna go through all 27 sites next Wednesday, then?
You will have the information for all those sites, but I think we really only need to discuss those 11, unless someone, you know, feels strongly that a different, one of the other sites needs to be discussed.
Okay. Okay.
It might take more than one meeting.
Yeah, I know, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
When you're already doing other stuff. I don't know.
Need to get started.
No, 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 I mean, but it, what I'm saying is, it could lead to another meeting.
I think it's very likely.
Yeah, all right, all right, fine, as long as we don't have to finish everything by next Wednesday, yeah, okay.
No.
'Cause that's a lot.
No, no, and we can't rush through it either.
No, no, we shouldn't.
We have to make good, solid progress, but we're not going to just superficially look at it and say, okay.
No.
There are no good decisions after 10:00 PM.
Yeah, that's...
Can we meet at noon?
Wow, good shot there.
All right, anything else on the master plan? All right, Commissioner comments?
I have one. The Ridge 5 Office Park, where the, uh, racetrack was gonna be, this week, they've pulled down the barriers. Uh, they were in there, they are going to be using it for general parking for the live tournament. And what really, I was really encouraged to see is, on most of the sites, they've actually put up a site, a sign indicating the site, uh, indicating what it could be used for, and in several of them, it's suggesting that, um, they are planning buildings that would be leased out, that could potentially be available as early as this time next year. So, it's obvious, um, big progress, and, you know, speculative at this point, but still big progress there. Very happy to see it.
For, for the whole thing, or just a Ridge Road?
28 sites in total?
Yeah, how many, is it nine?
Eight or nine.
Eight or nine.
There were nine.
Yeah, at least, I think about three of them have signs that suggest...
I mean, all the way to the end?
Yes, yes.
To Napier? Okay.
Well...
No, not to Napier.
To Ridge.
To, to, it, it's from Ridge and that creek, Johnson's Creek.
Yeah, okay.
So anyway, good progress there.
Yes, the, the developer for that site has come in and met with the township, um, departments, and they are looking to start with three different sites within the Ridge 5 Park, um, and have some conceptual drawings already for that, so, yes, promising.
Great.
Other comments?
I, I know this doesn't have anything to do with us, but we, we all do, uh, represent the township, and I think, you know, I was hoping Chuck would be here tonight, but, you know, Northville Road is going to be used as, I believe, a bus route, because we're, we already have about 30 buses a day going down Northville Road. So there, I think it's, I think they might be in training right now, or they're moving the volunteers, but, or they're taking people from the hotels and bringing them down. I think it's very imperative that we clean up that, uh, body shop, or, you know, whatever, 'cause it looks like a hellhole. And if the people are coming to live, you do understand that they're high-income, and they're gonna look at that and go, why, why would we even want to live here? So I, somehow, we need to get that to Chuck, I think, you know, and I don't have the time to do that.
You mean that, that, that two-car garage place, that's like an off, yeah, yeah?
I mean, I just get the signs off.
Right, yeah, I drove down there today, I, I know what you mean.
So, yep, and I, once again, I'll reiterate, I appreciate the time that Dennis and Tim and Laura put into this, uh, project, and, um, I've learned a lot working with these two gentlemen, and of course Laura, and look forward to wrapping up sometime in the future.
I wanna get it done, it's been delayed quite a bit. Any other comments?
Yeah, mine was, was, was a question, right? Um, 2556 with the, the site PUD, right? The guys that came in here on saving that 58-inch or 50-plus inch diameter breast height tree, which was awesome, 402, it's right on the property line. Did we get to root cause?
Well, did you find out anything more on that, Laura?
Yes, so the tree 402 wa, was in the right-of-way, and it was on the Virginia Tile site, so they didn't really have the authority in that meeting to claim that they could save it. It's not part of the Plymouth Flex project. They are attempting to save tree 403, um, but that property is not legally on their, on their site, and it was in the right-of-way of Virginia Tile.
It wasn't identified under site plan, or was it? I don't have that.
It was. I think that they hastily agreed to it before us that evening. It was on the Virginia Tile site plan.
On the, oh, okay, that, that was my question. But it also appeared on the Flex site plan, too.
Because they have a shared...
Oh, the shared driveway, oh, yeah. Oh. So that's, potentially, that was a 200-year-old tree.
Right, right. So it begs asking the question, if we understand root cause, and it looks like it's right on the property line, and it is in the right-of-way, to your point, Laura, right? What, what can we do to prevent recurrence, right? You know, number one, and number two, whoever's cutting on a containment standpoint, it'd be nice to see somebody have a conversation with them, you know, just so they understand that, you know, this was a, a sad loss, right, for a tree that earned its keep here, you know, converting our CO2 and the oxygen, we believe, for 200 years, unfortunately.
So what would be your suggestion?
You know, I thought about, uh, do you put caution tape on the trees? Do you put a little triangle, a little fence around it, right? Because equipment can bang into a tree to your email point where somebody scarfed another one, okay? So not only lose one, another one's been damaged, it's a heritage tree. You've gotta have some kind of barrier, right? They have plastic barriers, they got foam barriers, but you need something that's more than two, three feet away to serve as a barrier, so you hit it. And you, you have a tactile feeling, right? I just, I don't know what the right answer is, right? 'Cause I haven't been in a, a tree-saving position, but I'm sure we have enough experts and arborists that probably have done this in other communities, right? They could share lessons, learn the best practices. So, we revise our tree ordinance, and we put some teeth into it, and it's reflected in the new master plan.
We would have to recommend a revised tree ordinance. And, and to your point about some kind of barrier, or whatever it takes, that probably And, and to your point about some kind of barrier, or whatever it takes, that probably should be part of an approval, when, when we say, save this tree or a group of trees, that they'd be, and we require them to put some kind of snow fence or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, i- in reality, that's, we have to do that as contractors, right? And we, I don't do big projects like that, but even smaller projects that we're doing a massive amount of traffic through that property, we have to put the barrier, and it's not really a barrier, it is a snow fence that, you know, falls down ten times during a project, but that is up to the contractor to do that, but, you know.
Actually.
You know, that'd be meaning that someone from the township has to be assigned that, which would be probably Dan Atkins, and, you know, and he works part-time, and we don't wanna spend any more money on this township, so.
It's the resources, yeah.
We're sort of running up a, a, a brick wall.
Yeah.
Into a brick wall.
Well, we, to, to answer your question partially, the Plymouth Walk, some, you know, proposal was also, became very contentious, re-earthing trees, and when they actually started the process of cutting down the trees, and I believe it was, would've been the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-three, they went out, there was a little tag on every tree that referenced the number in the tree survey, and Mary Ann McGaffey and I, Mary Ann's the head of the Environmental Leadership Commission, we actually went out on a Saturday and did a spot check. You know, there were way too many trees to check all of them, but we spot-checked some of the biggest trees, and they had erected a fence around those, probably ten, maybe ten, fifteen feet off of the center.
Of the, of the dirt, of the ring.
Yeah, exactly. And the idea, of course, is that the heavy equipment stays away from that because it damages the roots, and the trees that are still on that site, they've already been over it, you can already see the soil. So I don't know if that was part of the specifications that the developer provided us when the project was approved, or if it was the building department's requirement that they do this, but that was the process that was used there, and as you can see from the, the results, we've actually been able to save some of those trees. So that should've been followed, in my view, on both the Virginia Tile and the Flex site, the same process. I don't know why it wasn't.
It would be good if we could drill down with, with both entities to find out, right, number one, and ask them for what they've seen, because they know what to do and what not to do, right? So we can learn, right? And I'm sure other townships have best practice they put in place, it's just, I'm not knowledgeable, I don't think any of the seven of us up here are, are experts in, in this area.
Do you know, Laura, if that was, that's standard township practice with the fences, or if that was something unique to Plymouth Walk?
No, I believe the, the fencing around the tree, usually you do it around the drip line, because that corresponds to the root structure. That's typical, the silt fencing around the drip line.
Yeah, there's a lot, I think there's room for a lot of miscommunication between what's on the plan and the contractor that's out in the field, and sometimes there's a last-minute oops kind of thing, you know, they didn't realize, oh, we have to put this water main in, and there's trees in the way, and they wanna hurry up and get the job done, and, I mean, I think try as we might, and we should try as close as we can, I think there's always gonna be some slippage in that. But we really have to button down at the site plan stage.
And, and as part of the master plan update, we probably need to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees about coming up with some kind of penalty for developers that don't follow the site plan that they've provided us on trees.
Yeah, and Bob, I don't know if you recall, but you raised that issue some few years back about what's the incentive? We had a discussion about penalty, and there isn't much of an incentive for a, a developer to take down the trees. The penalty is not strict enough.
Right. But they can pl- plant smaller trees that add up to one that.
There, it's in the ordinance, if you read through it, it, there's a formula.
You could make it a misdemeanor, but do you wanna make it a criminal offense?
No, wow, I don't think so. Just put a monetary thing, I guess, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting, you know, five to ten.
Literally, I was at Alice's Restaurant.
And all due to seriousness, because it was on a right-of-way, right? Maybe we have to have clear language that right-of-way trees, right, are, are looked at, right, differently, and they could've routed it around inland, they've gone around it. There's probably two or three different solutions that could've come up with, other than just cutting it down, and then they dug up the root structure, and all the evidence was gone, that's why I took the photograph back after the May meeting, right? And I sent it, and shared it, and I went to my dismay, but it looks like they may have saved other trees. Just be nice if they could do better than what they're already doing at Virginia Tile, if, if they were at fault for the root cause here. And I always wanna put prevent recurrence in place as an engineer to make sure it doesn't happen again, right? And, and the loophole here is it's on a right-of-way.
Well, it increases our sensitivity again, you know, to a greater degree than the sensitive, sensitivity that I think we currently have from all of us.
And the residents clearly in the surveys, you know, I mean, it's like forty-some percent took the time to say that was extremely important, right? And, and it is, so.
Just to close the loop on the one that I'd raised earlier, which was the townhomes on the St. John's site, did Ken verify that they had properly done that?
Uh, yes, the, they have saved some additional trees, actually, on that site, they've been able to preserve a couple more.
Good, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question on condos, since that seems like all builders wanna do is condos now. Do we have, cuz it seems like there's always short of parking places there. There is an ordinance, you need so many extra spaces per unit and stuff, we have that in there?
For parking?
Yeah.
There is a, well, if it's a single-unit dwelling?
No, no, the condos, like the condos.
As in the, the Plymouth Walk, detached townhouse?
As an example, yeah.
Okay, um, yes, there is a standard for those, and there's a, a guest parking for multifamily. Si- single-family dwellings can be condos, though, too. That's just a ownership model.
All right, cuz you guys live in condos, I mean.
Yeah, we do.
There's never enough parking, right?
We have nine extra parking spots, you could squeeze ten if you wanted to, and there's only twenty-five buildings in it, and those spots are usually three at a minimum, and when someone has a book club, or it's a holiday, they're jammed, and what worries me is, is I look at, how do we do things better, right? At the end of the day, and I, I come back to the Plymouth Farms, right, where they didn't wanna, I marked a drawing up, I don't know what they're gonna do, but man, oh man, I know the people that will be, they'll be kicking themselves if there's no extra flow parking, cuz they definitely had the room on the entrance road, next to that end condo, cuz they're putting asphalt in there anyway to go back to retention pond. Just put it there, give them something, they could've put it in the back, right? It's just, they need it. And we're, weirdly enough, having lived in condos and knowing you need it, and not everybody has a wide parking lot or a street that's wide enough, cuz the garbage trucks roll there and vehicles will get hit. That's why that spillover parking is so important for college kids.
Oh, it's very important.
Families that move back home, I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy, you need it.
Like on St. John, I, I can't believe they're putting seventy-two units in there, okay. I mean, are there gonna be extra spots to park? There are, okay.
Yeah, it's not only the parking, you know, the overflow parking, but it's, where did they put the snow? I raised that issue up with this Big B Coffee, you know, when we get snow, it's gonna be hard to find a place to put it. They were gonna put it in the, the parking, the limited parking that they have there, because they're primarily going to, it's just a drive-through, but there are a few tables and chairs in there.
It hasn't snowed around here in years.
This is true.
Yeah, true.
You have a short memory. Short, but good.
Ran by a snow blower four times, total in the last three years.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's like once a year, yep, you're right, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn at seven forty-seven?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn at seven forty-seven P M.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Lattarick to adjourn at seven forty-seven. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, adjourned.